I'd like to call out Lieutenant Morrison by the way. Mr. Bradford, would you start us out for air, please?
So, by here. Then, Father, we thank you, God, and thank you for announcing to see another day. And, Father, we just want to continue to pray, oh, God, for our head officials. Father, continue to give them strength from Ohio, God. And, Father, we ask our God that he keep them in hurt home of day, oh, God, of keeping the perfect peace, oh, God. And, Father, we just pray, oh, God, that you give them the strength and the will to lead your people. Father, we just pray for the community. We pray for the county. We pray for the state. We pray for this country, oh, God. Father, bless our first responders. Bless our teachers and our kids. Keep them safe today, oh, God. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you let love a brother, oh, God. And, Father, we just want to pray for any family in this community that may have lost some loved ones over the last two weeks. Father, continue to comfort their hearts, oh, God. And, Father, we thank you right now, Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You would please apply.
Pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to call Superficer Gray. Superfiser Hudson.
Here.
Superfiser Wilson.
Here.
Superfiser Gaines.
Here.
Deputy clerk, thank you.
Present.
Chancery clerk, Randy Lewis. Board attorney, Scott Slower. Go ahead and refer Andy Gaines. By him here. This time, we need to approve the dockets. If I could get a motion. A motion by Superficer Wilson. Second, second by Superficer Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next item on the agenda is Fred Parker. He's not here. He might come in a minute. Let's keep it for now. Next item on the agenda, city government business if any. James Johnson, have something?
He had a gun, probably. He was over there.
Alright, we will move to departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
When that Senator Sapples planned, and I wanted to announce that FEMA has awarded Adams County Superior Supervisors for the assistance of firefighters grant. This was a grant we applied for last year. It was for firefighter, two training material along with SCVAs and those are self-contained reactors. Right on time. So, this award on the FEMA's website, the award amount is forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. This FEMA grant is requires a five percent local match. So, that would come out to be two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, fifteen cents as a local match. I will need approval to accept or decline this award.
Move to the next.
You got a motion by Superficer Wilson, second by Superficer Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Courtney Martin. I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County Superior Supervisors. The first thing I would like to spread across the minutes is approval of all the statement for the credit card statement, for the travel card and procurement card for approval.
Motion by Superficer Gaines, second. Second by Superficer Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
And I would also like to spread across the minutes. We did do the bid opening for the road department for the six-month and the year supplies. Six-month supplies for the surface cores. We have APAC. And for the asphalt, we have Hensley. And for the leveling, we have APAC, who is the only bidder. For the passing, we have Hensley. And for the covert, the concrete metal and plastic coated and uncoated pipes, the only bidder was Southern Covert. And for the bulk concrete, the hardener, the local field, the only bidder was St. Catherine's Redman. And that's for the six-month supplies. For the yearly supplies, for the CRS per gallon, that was ergon. For the pea gravel, the three-eight pea gravel, the wash gravel, the coarse aggregate and wash gravel aggregate, we're going with APAC. For the limestone, the crushed limestone and the riprap, we're going with Dozer. Terrell also submitted a bid on that. For the dirt and the granular material, we're going with Dozer. For the breeze construction supplies, we're going with Dozer. And we didn't get any bids on the breeze materials. So, those are going to be purchased probably from a local vendor as needed. And also for the roadway stripping, we didn't get any bids, so we're going to purchase those as needed. We did get a bid for the gray blades, which the company that bid is wear parts, but they only submitted a bid. They didn't submit a bid for single blades. They only submitted a bid for both. So, we're not going to go with their bid. We're going to go with the local vendor, bucket machinery, and we're going to just purchase those as needed.
Two of them, she's got. Alright, can I get a motion to approve these bids?
Some.
A motion by Superficer Hudson. Second by Superficer Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
So, last thing I have is I do have the quotes for the bucket for emergency management. The one that Brad spread across minutes last board meeting was a two thousand seven Altec. The price was seventy-nine thousand, but he has dropped the price. I have gotten some additional quotes. I did receive one that I did receive one that was exactly like it, but it was sold back in July. The other ones are newer models and they cost more. The cost is more. But in speaking with the gentleman at his truck sales, he was able to drop the price to seventy-three thousand. So, I just need to know if you all want to go ahead with that purchase or just hold on.
What model is it?
It's an old model. It's a two thousand seven. But the higher you get with the model, the more they cost. And I do have those quotes, I think, certainly those. Pretty long ago.
Do they do bids? Do they do bids?
I'll talk to him and see.
Okay.
Maybe this time the desired board is to take this under oath.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am Corbin McNeil. I'm standing for you today in representation of the inventory clerk. I emailed everyone a copy of the fix assets reports for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two or meet to submit to the state audit officials department, and I'm asking for approval today.
Okay, a motion by Superficer Hudson. Second, second by Superficer Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a read?
Good morning, boys. James Johnson's sitting in office. I have one thing this morning. I'm conducting a private advocate class on Wednesday, October fifth. In this class is for any citizen to get their private advocate license about restricted pesticides. You know, there's some pesticide used to control weeds. You need mandatory license. So, I'll be conducting the class on Wednesday, first Wednesday, two o'clock at the extension office. I can email, send Corbin a flyer later, but the take place off twenty dollars by check of money order. So, this license will be good for five years for any, only for you for Mississippi stores. So, if you are living by day and want to use it for Louisiana, you got to go get a license through the LSU office to get their license. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, boys. I just got a couple things. The flood plain issue, I have big record. Thanks to Superficer Wilson. We did get cleared, so we did go on our flood plains. So, all everything has been up to date. Got the picture sent in to FEMA, so she's taking care of that there. I want to request travel for myself and Miss Connie Mason to attend Mississippi nine-one conference in the Lussey on October the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth.
You heard the request, Mr. Bradford. I have the forms here. They have been signed. A motion by Superficer Gaines. Second by Superficer Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
This time I ask for a few of the questions.
Good morning, boys. Robert Galar, County Road Department. Boy, he got approval, but I have to bring it up. Full-time worker. I do have another retired employee, Walter Jones, interesting coming back, work full-time, so I'm going to speak with him tomorrow. I'll have some information back next board meeting on him, but I just want to bring it forward, boys. I do have one more that's interesting coming back. They having a job fair at the convention center on September the twenty-ninth. It's called Governor's Job Fair. We still got time to register online. I was just going to ask the board. Could we register online and I have someone go down there and sit and talk to people to come in? Like I said, we have a lot of time getting employees, but I'd like to see if I could recruit one or two or however many we could get from there. But I'd just like to get permission from the board.
So, we got a motion by Superficer Gaines. Give me a second. Second by Superficer Wilson. Any discussion? I would like to say that this was a flyer in the meeting folder. And just so everybody knows, this is from nine AM to one PM on Thursday, September twenty-ninth. So, it was a great idea and hopefully you'll be able to build some empty spot.
Well, that's it. You don't like me and my folk about it, you know, tell them what the county's about, what benefits we have, what we have to offer and things like that, you know. I think, you know, in the past, people knew, but I think it's the word's not out yet, you know, we need to get the word back out what Adam County's about. Maybe improve a few good ones.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
Okay. Many smoke with FEMA on Thursday about the leaners and the hangers, and they're still in review as of right now. And the county portion of what we did as far as FEMA made more work, we're waiting on two-hundred-some-thousand-dollar reimbursement on that. We have to wait for the leaners and hangers to come out of review to get out of them too. So, I just wanted to give an update to the board that maybe is checking on that, you know, every week or every two weeks, you know, seeing where we at.
I also reached out last week to a contact I had at FEMA, and they're looking into this. Any action we can get on this, you know, we've just got to keep it moving because we need that reimbursement. We did it last week.
The other thing I have, you know, we went to this permit process in Adam County. We're having to issue an out of the bottle down around Miss Dawson's place. It's six AT&amp;T lines crossing that ditch right there. And nobody can give us an answer of how deep it is or where they at. So, when we get with AT&amp;T, they tell us to get with location company. Location company tells us to get with AT&amp;T, which I feel like is part of AT&amp;T. They're the one that either had contracted or they did it. I know it's still seeing things, but they say it could be twelve inches to thirty-six inches to deep. But as soon as we hit one, we're going to pay for it. Last, a couple of weeks ago, I got some stuff from Angie on some AT&amp;T bills that they'd sent us for things that Adam County was supposed to have hit. One of them was on a private piece of private property. We called and questioned. It was nine-hundred-and-something dollars. They called back and said, we won't, we'll do away with that, you know, we'll just talk about the other. So, they're trying to charge us for everything we do, and I feel like we're not getting what we called for. We call eight-one-one to get what information we need to do our job. And it's on our right of way and our dishes, but we still have to pay.
Well, I don't make one-one. You're not supposed to have to pay because they're supposed to mark them.
They do mark them, but they don't tell you the depth. It's six lines, and then if you're going to pay, if you hit it, you're going to pay. I'm telling you, you know.
Well, next time, if you have one that's worthwhile, we'll go up there and call them.
We've had several, which I've got with you on a couple before, but this was something to do. I just want to bring it forward, boys. Like I said, it's six lines right there. You can have them on site, even though you hit it, they still want to charge.
I think every digger amount.
We always talk to them that we know. We have. I mean, we've been able to work with them, but like I said, you know, we need some information from them. I mean, they need documentation just like we do. We go out, do something, we take pictures, we have to do cover ourselves. And I think that's what we need from them.
You basically got a government side AT&amp;T and a private side AT&amp;T. The private side sends the bill, and then you switch over to government side, and they're like, oh, no, no.
Well, that's what I say. We got a good relationship on a local basis. I know we can call, they can look and tell, but like I said, for some reason, this time, it's where we can't do anything, but nobody wants to tell us nothing.
Is there a local guy that you can have on site when we're done digging?
I talked to him and had him on site, and he's one telling me about twelve inches. But we got to do it, and we going to do it. And I'm just bringing it forward that we're going to clean the ditch and, you know, we'll deal with it, I guess, when it happens, whatever happens. I hope nothing happens. But I just want to bring that forward, boys. And that's really one reason I want to put something in place with Scott, with these permits and things, that, you know, we get a better idea of where things are and how deep they are.
When they created that law, they tried to exempt counties from it, and NAS did not want them exempt from it. And that was just a big mistake because if we were exempt from it, we wouldn't be liable for it at all. They would be back just to make sure to get our exemption back in.
And like I said, I have two EWP's, which I waited until the new firm gets up seventy-two of bridge. And the other one is sixteen prints edition, but like I said, I'm going to wait till they get here. And I'd like to thank the board for the two pickups we were able to get last week. We were able to pick up two trucks. So, I do want to thank the board for that. That's all I have.
Robert, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
With the additional trucks, any trucks going off?
Yes, sir. Yeah, which the total truck was one of them, you know, which already off. You want to get wrecked. And then I do have another one that said, damn, you know.
It's going to go out?
Yes, sir.
On the dump truck, is that something you're familiar with?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I mean, I'm working on, I mean, we just know Angie's been working on budget and things like that, so he's trying to get to it, but.
So, I checked with state audit, and they went back and forth, actually. On one hand, Shaquille O'Neal on the phone, and they said, you don't need a bid if it's from the vendor. But before that, I already went ahead and emailed the banks and asked them for bids anyway. We got two bids from banks, but, and one of them is, you know, I think half the cost of the bid that the vendor was offering.
Yeah.
But the way I understood the bid was it was set on a fifteen-year schedule, but with a three-year buyback or, and defining somewhere, they call it a balloon payment in three years. But we've got two bids and can do it. I just wanted to make sure. Is that going to jam us up with a vendor if we go with the bank?
No. And there was best for the county. I mean, the truck's is there. We just get whatever financing we need to do it. I mean, we don't have to finance to the company. We can finance to any bank or whatever.
Then, if that's okay, we can move and accept the lowest and best bid of, I, both of them, I'm just super impressed with because I emailed them late Friday. And, you know, one of them, Coria Bank actually called me at nine o'clock saying, hey, I was at a meeting. I really want to build them. So, I said, shoot it out, and so they did. Unfortunately, they want the lower bid. That was just real impressive. And then on Sunday, I got one from James Brown from Delta Bank. Delta was the lowest bid. It's at two point seven percent versus, I think the vendor was four point, four point five. Well, and then Coria's lower, and that four point seven-five. So, the lowest would still be Delta. Did not expect that lower rate, so. But if y'all want to accept that bid, we can get the paperwork out and get going for Delta.
The Delta bid, yeah.
Delta's fine. Sometimes it take a little while, so, especially with James, you know. I like James, he's great. He's a super smart guy, you know.
I heard it was all ahead.
So, move. A motion by Superficer Wilson, second. A motion by Superficer Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? And all opposed? Eyes open.
Thank you.
We got enough now for EWP, so we'll have twenty twenty.
Good morning, board. I just want to give an update on a couple of our projects. Let me start off with EWP. The contractor is getting ready to move to print edition. And once we perform the clearing, realize the recent storming that has caused some extensive damage to the site that requires some additional survey and additional engineering design and potentially increasing cost for that project here, sixteen print edition. We did complete the design on, we made on, I think, Wednesday, and they did complete the design on Friday. We're going to finalize the quantities today and submit it to the contractor. The only thing about that is the new access to the site and the equipment that will be needed will potentially damage the adjacent driveway. And so, there's an allowance being requested for, to remove and replace that driveway if it does occur as a result of construction. And so, the contractor has submitted an allowance request of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents to be added to the project in the event that driveway is damaged. And they have to demo it and replace it. And I'm just having, asking for a question from the board to allow us to add this allowance to the project in an amount of nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and twelve cents for print edition.
I move that I am yes be allowed to add nine thousand if need additional for the driveway if need.
A motion by Superficer Gray. I second. Second by Superficer Gaines. Any discussion?
All discussion I have, we have a similar problem where we had some, like, in your area, and somebody had claimed that the contractor damaged their driveway. And we really didn't have nothing in place to really fix it, and everything was on the contractor. So, me personally, I'm glad that they're doing this on the front end and not on the back end. Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor?
George, the pricing you got is based on the bids that you, the cost of the equipment, the cost of the stuff that was on their bid, is that right?
No, this is for the driveway. So, the new information is not related to the material that we were using for the actual design of the project.
So, how did you come up with the pricing?
They submitted their quote. They submitted a quote.
Okay, and why is that commercially reasonable?
Say what now?
Why is it commercially?
Because when I look at the unit rate for concrete and removal of concrete.
It's like the unit rate that they did on?
No, yes. So, the total fee, if I take the square.
I understand this is an additional to what was originally bid. You used the unit pricing from their original bid to come up with this additional amount?
No.
So, how did you come up with the unit pricing?
You do the square, the square yards. And I speculate that with their unit price, to come up with a unit price for how much would be, it's within line with normal rate for that type of work.
The normal rate?
For that type of work, to remove concrete and to pour concrete.
Based on your experience as a?
Not just my experience, actual recent quotes that we received for the same type of work.
You got a quote from, I'm sorry, you got to put this into the minutes when you do a change or a flawless.
Yeah, so, work that we've done in engineering-wise and quote that we received from several contractors is in line with that. We always compare it to previous projects we've done as well as unit price that may come for someone like State Aid for the same type of work. We always compare to that. Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
And the second thing with that also is that the work we're requiring is to give an additional easement. And so, I did send that over to Mr. Slower this morning. And what the contractor agreed to do is move to Liberty Road and work on that site while we're getting the easement for the print edition. So, the project is not stopping, they're just moving to another site, and then they'll come back to print edition once they're completed. The next thing I have is the new striping project that we get submitted to State Aid. So, now I'm just waiting on them to send back comments and set up a plan and inspection for us to go over the field, to do our field review with State Aid. And then that'll be that. The next one is Burke Road. We did submit the pre-assembly plan, and this morning I got emails back that they're sending us the final comments back to get ready to advertise the project. So, that project and the comments were mine. So, hopefully, this week, we have those submitted back to State Aid and hopefully get some authorization to advertise. The only holdup that we have on our end is the Mississippi Department of Arch塘 District has not completed their review. It's taken longer than normal, I'm not sure why, but once we get their review back, then environmental will be done, and we just be waiting on the right.
We got, one of the landowners has agreed to donate the property. I was going, I may have forwarded it to George, I should have, if I didn't. The question that they had was about a fence, whether a fence can be put back up, you know, after the project was done. I'll give you and make sure that that's okay. They'll donate it if that's the case. And the landowner's not really sure about it, so I'll try, probably have to get with you two to try to explain to them what all we're doing and so forth. And I might ask the board if any of y'all know them, so we can try to talk and make sure we feel good about it. I got a couple of numbers for the United States, whatever it is, the wildlife and fisheries. So, I got a couple of leads on that and who to talk to. So, we're doing our best to get those right of ways in place. I have a little bit of trouble with one of them, so maybe one of y'all knows them, and we can get them to certain comfort level to give them.
But the design should be submitted and everything, as far as engineers-wise, should be done this week. And we just be waiting on that last environmental document and right away, so we're ready to move forward. Alright. I got some information from Mr. Johnson from the city this morning. So, we'll begin to populate the portal for Morgantown Road this week and should be done submitting everything engineering-wise this week. But a lot of administration question that need to be answered that we can't. So, I'm pretty sure the city and county will work together to submit information, but as released to the project, we have all our things submitted this week. Alright. Alright. And then, go ahead.
The city sent a comment back on theirs. Basically, their only commitment is to that, the pricing is what we have estimated and based on what the grant is. So, if it's the board prerogative, I can adjust the memorandum. What I would do is we would.
We're still going to apply for that grant and see how much it is.
But we'll, you know, you can give us a back out if it ends up not getting approved, the grant or whatever. We're not bound by doing the, you know, we have to go back to the table and rework out how much money we decided to pay.
So, when you going to find out about the grant?
He's populating around now with James Johnson in our pipeline.
How long is it going to take?
I'm not sure how long the grant will take.
I'm not sure how long the response will take. I know that we'll be through submitting this week for the actual.
But it's not going to impact our, just two phases, so we can still go for on the two point five of a year mark as well. And that amount, you know, we've gotten a price breakdown on that one and agreed to that. So, this is just the second phase, and whether we get a grant or not.
That's the.
I just don't want, yeah, I just don't want us to commit to something if it, I don't like writing a blank check. I know the board doesn't like either, so in the event that we don't get the grant or it comes back, you know, something wacky comes back, we're not bound by it. Does that make sense?
That's how you don't see.
It's a form of a grant through M D Q.
Okay.
And that's, that's American Recovery Act, one-to-one MAC money.
Okay, that's on that. What about that M C, W I grant?
It's the same, it's the same grant.
That's the same grant.
Yeah. And so, I have that information for the Deerfield Road Main Line Extension. And so, I'm requesting the board.
Right, and I'd ask you to help up. If you can tell George and I just basically summary, what can George and I, or really George, put that on? I don't try to help.
Yeah. I'm just. The only thing I need to know is just what the project, what the proposed project entails. Therefore, there's a portion of the application required to ask about the scope. And so, again, I'd say only portion of these grants that I can complete is the engineering portion. There are a lot of administration questions, financial questions, operating questions, that I would not be able to answer for the county. So, I can only submit anything related to the project itself.
Well, President. Well, the part that you can't answer, when, who going to answer?
There are a lot of administration questions as far as the.
So, I have, you doing something like this, if an administration questions need to be answered. So you have, if you doing something like this, if an administration questions need to be answered, then who else?
Usually somebody from the county, if it's not the clerk or the administrator or somebody who's been designated to work along with us typically. In the past, we've had some sort of grant writer or something that usually populates those portals. And then we just provide information to them as we need as far as engineering um, concerned.
Okay, well, my, my concern is this, I don't want the engineering part to be complete. Then it's just sitting out there for somebody else to do something and, and, and we don't know who's supposed to be doing it and, and uh, how's this project be going on and on and on. So once you finish your engineering part, then, then we need to designate somebody to do what he's saying?
Yeah, if y'all want him, designate someone that's in charge of doing it, and I, with working with George, he doesn't let that, you know, happen. He kind of, hey, this needs to be filled in, I don't know what this, this isn't, he was outside what he could do, he kind of.
So George, you gonna send it to the attorney and the attorney figure out who in county government need to do exactly what you saying?
Yeah, if we can do this, I'm sure we can, and we, we already, all we need was a summary from.
In the email, in the email I sent on Thursday, the, the list of questions was in that email.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody on the same page because the conversation I had with Mr. Johnson this morning, I, I, I don't want no slip ups like that. You know what I'm talking about? Thank you.
Any questions, put me on here. If not, I appreciate your time, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Are y'all okay with the, any, the guess, that, that foot? You know, your motion to, to.
Most of my supervisor, same, same, my supervisor, most of the new discussion, all in favor, all opposed, I said.
Good morning, everyone. Um. Let's see, the seventy-two Oak Ridge.
Hang, hang on a sec before you get into that. See what?
Things coming around.
Okay, okay. Alright.
Seventy-two Oak Ridge, I would uh, I, we have a cost estimate on that of about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In there, the original cost of N R C S had was a hundred and eighteen, that was in the project. I would, I'd like to ask to, and I, I talked to N R C S about this, is to re, get this project reprogrammed. In there, cause I don't think we'd get the cost increase on this without reprogramming this project. In there, uh, the. This would also free up some money in the uh, in the current project to pay for some of the uh, fuel adjustment costs. And uh, any overruns that we, we have in the project.
Uh, Mr. President, Robert Charming, I, I gotta give this uh, this lawyer attention and Robert attention. I mean, I, I, I think, I'm not sure this project has been going on anyway before me, when we got in, I noticed it. It was at a warm day like a year out or something like that, and I reprogramming, uh, used to take probably sometime even from a year to two years, something like that. And, you know, we went out there, I don't think it, it'll hold up for a year, two years. Uh, with the road and the project has been done and the whole um, bottom had that undermined, I think that later by that time it happened. So I could do the whole, the whole project that Camo did before, I, I, I mean, I'm not into DM, I'm gonna let Robert Charming on.
Okay, can I ask a question? You say that project cost that they allocated for was a hundred and eighteen thousand and that's what, five hundred and what?
Five hundred and seventy.
Seven.
And that's our, that's our estimate based on.
Okay, Robert, you and I had that project like that on Liberty Road, the Ellis Project. And I think the project had gone up to five hundred and seven some thousand dollars, so.
Yours, the, what happened there on that project, this is a different situation, but what happened with your project, that the project it went more than what they were protecting. You know, it's like a thirty percent or whatever it is, I don't know the exact number, but you know, the house is a hundred thousand, the project's two hundred and fifty thousand, we can call it more than that project than what the property was.
Right.
And that's N R C S's, the general for catalyze or whatever. This is out of county road, this is a road, this is our road, about a county.
Yeah, it's a road.
Yeah, and it's residence beyond this and like I said, it's a, a ten foot pipe under the road. It's got the beat addressed and has something the county's got to buy, it's about eighty thousand dollar for the pipe that we still got about on top of. I guess we got that, that thing, again, five seventy. But, you know, my concern is the same thing that he was saying. We done a project, Camo did a project already, well. Part of the project failed and the failure, they're saying is caused by as much water coming under that road, coming through that pipe, washing the toe out under the project. So at this point, they have not went back done any warranty work. Camo had because the agreement we made out there that day with county engineer and contractor and all, that we would let that contractor do this project. And the reason being is if he went back done his repairs and somebody else got it, then this project failed, he's gonna blame it on this, so you got to fight each other. So we agreed to let that contractor continue on with this E W P project. Um, as Warren said, once you reapply or put in, and I know they're saying we can under this last rain event. And even though you do that, and you go through winter and you get in the next year, six, eight months from now, before you get any money, cause I know we're waiting on. Four sites now that's been approved that we thought the money was here, which is Low Water Ridge, which is two on Magnolia Bluffs, we still had to see them funds and they didn't save for two, three months and money's here. So as that goes on and winter goes on and the weather and the rain and those sites, that project's gonna get a lot worse than they had done. But then the next thing we're coming up is five seventy here, plus what the repairs is gonna be on the one that they had done any warranty work. So you probably do, I, I mean, I don't know, that project they did cost what, a hundred and?
I can't remember exactly, but the exact number on that project.
So, and if you gonna add, you looking at seventy hundred thousand dollars to redo, you know, combine projects again, but they're not gonna resubmit the projects that's gonna fail because we hadn't done this project, am I correct?
Yes, and within this project, we would, we're recommended going back in and crushing the riprap on that project and, and leaving it as a loose riprap in place.
So you gonna crush the riprap, go back in and put global field on top of that crushed riprap?
No, we're gonna leave it as loose, loose riprap there.
Well, that was already causing a hole, or the holes was in the riprap, that's where some undermining was coming in already, if I'm not mistaken, am I right?
Yeah, and that's why we, well, that's why we're doing that, is we don't want to uh, uh, compromise that. When you, when you put the grounded riprap up under there, it doesn't, if there's, if there's places that are undermined, it doesn't show up in there and so we're gonna.
But I'm saying, if you crush it to, to fill those voids and then you don't seal it. We really haven't got anywhere, haven't, I mean.
So why, we're gonna, we're gonna riprap the whole.
I understand, but if you don't put drought on top of it, you leaving all of your voids to continue to get worse. And that's the reason they grout them in the beginning.
You're right.
My last, what's up my needs to hear, but.
And I'm not an engineer either, but you know, we had to want all clear up the inner height, we had to go back and make it new because when you crush riprap, riprap is number rock. Rock just set in place, where anywhere water go off and going between those cracks and that water, it starts a void. And, and when you really find out, the void sometimes is big as this chair and it might be big as the room. So they put floor field across the top of it to make it a concrete so water can't go through, so. And I mean, you'll ha, actually have to see that project, we probably talking about what, seventy to eighty feet down, without, with crushed rocks. And if you lose the bottom, if you lose the footing, that means you lose everything on the stabilization side of it. So, you know, and how long has that project been going on, Robert, I know it's quite that.
Been going on a while, a year was up.
But I got it.
Probably a year.
Maybe.
No, it was before we got here.
That was before you got here, right.
Mr. President, is this the same project?
We, yeah, yeah.
How long ago that been, since I went out there when I was young?
That's been six, eight months ago, long.
So, but I thought something's supposed to been done, maybe I wasn't hearing right, something's supposed to been done then.
This is the one that fell to the wayside, we had the twenty-four sites, it was approved. And we called it at the office, cause it had fell to the wayside, it wasn't even in, it was in on the project, but, but neither engineer had picked this site up.
Hold, hold, hold now, what do you mean, ni- neither engineer?
Well, we get a part of that, that part of them here, we, well, it was in their group, it was in y'all group, it had fell, it had fell to the wayside. When J K S had got the groups, then seventy-two was left out, and so we was going through back to office. And we come across seventy-two, wasn't anywhere on it.
Uh, what, what I'm saying is this, uh, I understand how you phrase me, but it shouldn't have been the one engineer.
And it just popped, it popped out because it was in the group they had, and I think it was in the group that they had, they.
So I thought when we went out there, we, we had a plan in place to address this.
Yeah.
And it never came back up now, suddenly it fell to the wayside, now it done got worse, so, so what we gonna do?
And time rolled out, November the seventeenth, is that correct? We had a hundred and eighty thousand, like you said, the project five seventy.
Uh, J K S is asking that she reapply under new E W Ps.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Have they talked to?
Because it's too much money.
Mike Green? What Mike Green said, he.
He called the Norman too.
I've been talking with Norman about this and just with the, with the cost on the project, that's, that was, we felt it was better to reapply.
Alright, hang on a second, about the. Well, Mr. President, uh, somebody, Gray, Grant, Robert, but let me see, make sure we on the same page. It did fall to the wayside, but it had not fell to the wayside up until now. Me, Grant, Mike Green, Mike Grasso, we met back out there, what, three months ago? At least three months ago, only once they figured out, three to four months once they figured out it's there to the wayside. We came up with a plan, well, supposedly get it straight, well, they was trying to get it straight for this year's November deadline. Well, and I think we had a problem that was busy and we just getting the drawing, am I correct, Grant?
Yes.
So the drawing is coming up now and they're not gonna have time to actually fix it, with the cost that's been addressed and that's one of the things I'm concerned about. Because Mike Green was there, the contractor was there, so you know, and I know from being there, Mike Green is with N R C S who they referring to. And so it wasn't, everybody wasn't on the same page, so I think before we make a decision to do anything, I think everybody needs to be back at the page so we'll know what we're doing. Because there's gonna be money that we lose from the project that we previously put in, and that's something gonna happen, that we gonna lose that part of that road, am I correct, or not correct?
As he said, we left out there that day, the contractor said he needed about forty-five to sixty days to do the project. The engineer gave us the first of the bid of August to have the drawings complete and ready. And seventeenth of November is the deadline, so now we're thirty days from drawing out, which we, from August to now, September. So if he catches it now and then, the ramp up that even started October, he couldn't finish it by the seventeenth of November anyhow.
Couldn't finish.
Is, I think is what you're trying to say, is that correct?
Yeah, and I, I mean, with the cost, the cost increase and that, we did have to go back out in August and bring some more survey, spend our survey in that. And because of some eroded uh, ditches that were coming into the, the project to cover those.
How long you demanded it was gonna be way, but more expensive?
He just found that out when he started draw, I said just found that out, I mean, we knew it was gonna run over summer, we were there at the time we all met, but.
Cause you been asking about this and asking about it, asking about it.
Mr. President, okay, that, that kinda handles the road part, but now we looking at a part that was already done, that's, that's, that's not up to speed. And it's, this gonna be road and get to this later house, are the county gonna, gonna buy her a new house? Because of, of, of wherever going out, are the county gonna replace this one house if that thing road and get all the way up to her house?
This is not the county's here on food stretch, the first project didn't work, that's, that's the way it was. And so we agreed to reapply under another section, and then when the come, time came along to actually do that project, it got skipped again and now we're asking to reapply for it again. Is that, is that the way it is, Robbie?
That, that you telling the truth.
That's what it is.
I mean, is that not right, Grant, I mean, that's, we, we did the project.
Well, the first project was to protect the house right there. The second project was to come back up between that project and the road and repair where the uh, where it had been eaten out and eroded. And that's right there, so they're gonna do additional there, but in the, when we went back and looked at it, the, the riprap is cracking and coming, is moving down the hill there. And it is eroded out to a clay bottom in, below the first project.
First project's not working, this is my recollection, that ain't gonna happen.
Hey, you were out there.
And all that. Then the, the, that project wasn't working, it was failing.
Yes.
And that did impact the road, I mean, that.
So originally.
And I never asked, is this about, this gonna affect the road, and I thought Robbie said, you know, that was kinda.
Originally on this project, we were gonna try to come back in with some heavier riprap and, and keep the rock, the grounded riprap from sliding down the, down the slope. But I don't think we, I don't think we could do that, we, we need to redesign the whole thing.
We got it too far down there, we need to go in and put some power, pound whatever the toe, what he thought about doing. Get stabilized what was there and then go back and make the repairs on what they've already done and then do the one coming through the creek, you know, changing the cord and all that. But now it's done got past that repair, so now it's gotta be redesigned, crushed, as he said, and try to push down in the voids and get it done, if I can see it. And I'm not an engineer, but if you don't grout it, seal it, I don't know why we even grout any of them if we.
So was, was there warranty work done or was?
No, warranty work was not done, cause they gonna tie it all into this one project and to do the warranty work, fix this crack and all, still wasn't gonna fix. It would've fixed it warranty, but it wouldn't stabilize this project, it had to be something done if the toe would probably migrate or shift in.
How many structures in danger out there?
Two.
Well, it's a house above, maybe.
The road, the land, right there.
Just one right there.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars, if we're saving one house.
Yeah, we still gotta fix our road though.
It's not the same house.
I ain't saying, I ain't saying.
Yeah, we gotta fix our road.
It's the same road that's the only access point to, then a pole sack, am I right?
So.
Well, I've seen the government pass, spend three billion dollars fix one house and then they tore the house down like six months later. Have they spent three billion dollars saving house, so.
Well, it's.
Might always be running in that, that situation, but, and thi, and this is a U S soil water conservation.
It's a match.
And they know as well as everybody else does that uh, everything's gone up on that one project, went at five hundred percent on, on that subject on building, flow through it. Five hundred percent on electricity, it's like, we might even put some power poles up there to underground.
You know, but, you know, we just basically need to make a decision, what can we do to save this road, save these people, I mean, and I need to, you know, shoot the ball, they dropped a bunch of times, it's not. At this point, I'm not worried about pointing fingers at who dropped the ball, it's not, that's not the case. Uh, but what are we gonna do, and, and Robert, what do you?
And I'm gonna say.
These recommendations, cause you know, these folks, when we go out there, we gotta go.
We can set up a meeting with Norman and Mike and J K S and Camo and ourself uh, to do this, but like you said, he's not gonna. But like you said, he's not gonna meet the November deadline if the money was there. If it's still a hundred eighteen thousand dollar project, he would meet the deadline as we speak anyhow. Because he's got Prince of the Liberty Road and then he's got, uh, Landstown to finish up on, on the projects he's on that by November the seventeenth.
So, we need to re, we, I mean, no recommendation.
What I will do, try to do something and I'll, uh, get back to the office, email Norman and Mike and, uh. I guess you and Wes with Scott and J K S and myself, you know, I send an email there.
Okay.
See when Norman and can come to town and meet him quick or whatever.
Okay. But that's what I'm gonna recommend, that we doing.
I would like to say we're not gonna beat the deadline if the money was there yet.
Go ahead, Brian. Um, uh, the other thing I have on the, uh, the current E W Ps that are in construction. Where, uh, the group two E W Ps, they're working on Highway eighty-four. We're hoping, we're trying to get through with those, hopefully here in the next week to ten days will be complete. On that project. And then the group three E W Ps, um, we have one site left, it's probably this road. And they're working on that, we're looking at probably ten days to finish getting the rock down on it. And that's all I have for now, unless there's other places.
Oh, I was probably with the State Park Road law.
They're working, as far as we're concerned, not too fast. I mean, I, I mean, but they're, they're working on the, on the gravel.
Well, you know why I ask? Because, you know, we came here last time, yes. You, 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 we asking approval for the day, plus four or more days on it, you know what I'm saying? So, I wanna stay on top of it, I wanna make sure State Park don't drop the crap.
Right now, we have, we've gone back to, and taken that request and submitted to State Aid. And State Aid is going, is reviewing it and they will. They are going, they may reduce that time, they may not approve. The, the contractor submitted for forty extra days. They're looking at it and they're gonna go back to the contractor and if they, they're gonna give them whatever they see fit at this point. And we'll wait on a response from State Aid on that. And if they, I mean, if they, if they don't get, it's whatever they, at this point, whatever they're.
You know, and I say this, but I do want my, uh, road management to be going. It matters not, if I need to meet or we need to meet, I think our projects, uh, State Park Road should've been open. Back at the one, say when they said early spring.
Yes.
Uh, summer, we going in the winter again, you know what I'm saying? I, I, I just want some true answers for these folks that's gonna call me, oh, I ain't kicking it down the road. I'm not trying to blame you, I'm not trying to blame State Aid. I need some people to get on the same page so we can get this road and stuff finished. We should not be, you know, I understand the weather. But you know, the problem has been with all the time, I don't wanna kick it down the road another year, or six more months. And we did, so I would ask you, and, and on- once you get everything straight, we need to actually sit at the table and get some realistic data. And so, we can get it moving instead of kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road. And you know, prices increasing, everything increasing, so it's really gonna cost a counter. So, if we can get on one accord and get it done, it'll be better for all of us.
Yeah, and we're, we're trying to apply pressure to the contractor at this point. There's not any of it, those are the related damages, I mean, but don't want it to, we just want the job finished at this point.
Are they not, you said they're not working on it very fast, is that what you?
They're, they're, they're working out there, but it's, I mean, we feel like it makes you go faster.
We've got to be a full force press, I mean, we've had like.
Yes.
Ten or twelve days of good weather and eight or ten more coming with no rain, they all been haul, you know, haul hail out there.
Well.
They should be calling, I mean.
And, and that's why I, I say this, and I say this partly because we need, this need to be said. Uh, and, and I'm not taking up for nobody, but, you know, that is, the engineer come and say, we get, we need to be present. Okay, then you have a contractor checking and sending us that this design ain't right and that ain't right. And so, it's like, it's kicking down the road. The engineer said the contractor ain't working, the contractor said the engineer designs ain't right. And that's what we getting there, so it's kinda going back and forth down the road. We come here, I said, well, how everything going? And then I call the contractor, he's gonna riding out there, let ride out there and check. And the contractor said, well, this ain't right, or we waiting on this pipe, or we waiting on that side. And that's why I say I'm not trying to blame anybody. I'm just, I just need anybody to get on one accord and get the project completed. It, it ain't about, uh, putting it on this and putting it on nothing. Everybody need to set the table and go and get this road fixed.
Are we still in that conference right now about design?
I mean, the, no.
Okay, so this we doing project?
Yes.
They working on it, I went through there, um, it's like I rode the weekend just to rack. Or if I rode from beginning to end, all the way through from sixty-one day for. Uh, my concern is gonna be when they finish. Or they, and I know they say they are getting right compaction on what gravel's there, because it's a lot of sand and what's there. It's soft, trucks moving as you go through it now, I know they've been trying to get compaction. But when they do go ahead and lay the asphalt on, I just don't want no base failure under what's happening.
Yeah, so we, we got some issues with the, with the granular material.
I rode there this weekend, you, you can feel spots that's good here and next spot.
Yes, they're gonna, they're roads.
Yeah, I rode, that's when I rode, it's there. So, that was just my concern.
Yeah, and that's, that's something we, we, we're talking to them about.
Now, we're discussing it here, that was something I wanted to add, but I feel like we, that's moving and shifting. And I know they say they get compaction, but, uh, still it always will have that base failure, it's gonna have asphalt gonna leak in. And then, then we all back and pull it again.
Yeah. You're right, because I, I rode through also. And you know, at certain places it's hard, and certain places that you ride, it's like you're down on the same.
There, there were, there were some places that were, didn't, uh, that, that, those places will be replaced in there. They're, we're addressing that.
So, Mr. President, how we resolve, right, if they deal yet?
I was about to ask that question. Right, you know the thing?
I do not, uh, I'm not, I was like I thought today, working with the insurance. Uh, Scott, have you heard any?
Mm-mm, they get us claim number and all that, so they get back to us and then. I mean, someone could have just tell.
Contract, I was with Tommy last week, and I mean, we should know, like, doing that other project, it's come out of him. He talked to me about it, but like I said, I couldn't tell it, I don't know, but.
Did it take us three weeks?
Something like that.
And we got a deadline on that too?
Forty days. Roughly. Four days?
Forty.
Forty. Forty days. October thirtieth.
Well, we might not get this kind of weather very much long.
So, basically, at the next meeting, we'll have, when the losers are all, we'll tell them to.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know about the pipe, I mean, most of the pipe right now is two to three weeks out. I mean, especially pipe, you know, if you had to order something, you know, it's.
Who's gonna be responsible for ordering? Like, who's gonna be responsible for ordering a pipe?
J K S taking from here forward, I mean, if it's, if I say that, I'm not, I should say, if it falls on them, that's just taking it forward. I guess that's what the board's saying, they're taking it and moving.
If they are, they need to wait over that pipe some minutes, not another place, doesn't sound like we're gonna have a lot of those rare.
I thought it was about the pipe, and it's two to three weeks out, pipe is trying to do.
Oh, you have, Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Good morning, A F P, it's what he now, I want, I want to give you of, of this call from September first. The National Fire Department had seventeen. National Police Department had six hundred and sixty-eight. Adams S O had three hundred and eight. That's all I have.
Mr. Phil, only, uh, fire department calls, how many of those, do you break them down by city or county?
No, we don't break them down by city or county, but I do know on the county calls, we do call out the volunteer fire department to help assist.
So, we could, we would be able to tell the different.
I can, I can look on my, my log, because even though we have it in computers, I have a log too, I jotted that, everybody's called out.
It would be interesting to us to, to know that information, which one, how many of them are going out in county.
Okay, I can get it for you.
I appreciate it. We need to, because of the I L A, there's an increase in the fire, the calls are too many, too many calls, so.
Okay, I can get that for you. I can get my log and get that information.
Right.
Okay.
Good morning, boy.
Okay, I've got a new hire. Ray Cheryl Abraham. Uh, corrections officer in the jail, rate of pay is thirteen twenty-three. Yearly is gonna be twenty-seven, five, eighteen, forty.
I do have a paperwork here, it's on my, inside by H R, you heard the report. Well, supervisor Dan, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
Hold on a second, to start the pay twelve sixty? How much is that on that one?
Thirteen twenty-three.
What is that?
I'll have to find out, I mean, uh, Jack is the one handling this, and that's what she got on.
Mr. President, is that, is that best what the elder jails are making also? Elder jails making thirteen sixty?
Right, it's.
Thirteen twenty-three.
Thirteen twenty-three.
But a new hire does not start like it's current.
We also go by years' experience, if they've got any years' experience, because like I said, they're starting out at eighteen fifty at the prison. And I'm not sure about this thirteen twenty-three.
Has she got experience?
I'm not sure, I, I'll have to check into it.
But we talked about this, we love to do these things, but we're waiting on, you know.
Well.
Money to come in and all that, huh?
Mr. President, it, it, it goes to problem.
That's very important.
It go what you gonna run into. Uh, if the county administrator do a budget for a department. And the budget is at one price, and you bringing people in at another price, then you gonna run over your budget. Because if, if, if she got the starting pay at twelve sixty, and you bringing them in at another rate, then that means you gonna run over your budget. So, the best thing to do is whoever making these decisions, you need to communicate with the county administrator, well, when y'all come in here and fill this paperwork out. Then everybody be on the same page.
I'm the president, yeah, I, I wanna say that also, you know, picture the board and others, and you think about this also, as we go. You do hire people, and you have people that, uh, I'm not saying I don't know this. But I do know in other departments and everything, if somebody has experience in coming in, that we also negotiate. I'm not saying that you can start at the price, but I don't, I'm not saying that we should micromanage enough to start other departments. At, that these people do interviews and everything else and they know years of experience. So, I think there need to be a connection on the front end. And we do not need to also be narrow-minded enough to think that everybody come in, need to hire them at the same starting pay. When you got years of experience and everything else, no different in the road department, no different in the truck driver. Uh, you know, a regular worker, no different equipment operator and a regular worker. So, it is statics that we doing, so we need to take that into consideration when we also do that. Not meaning break the budget, I mean, with that, but we don't need to micromanage enough that we got other people. That you need people coming in and we can't hire people, uh, can't afford the, uh, field position in these other areas. A year or so.
Mr. President, I should just do, I agree with you saying, because some people have experience already before they come in. I agree with that, that they should be paid on that kind of scale. But also, when you, uh, advertise for these positions, you know what the starting pay is. So, they need to let that person know as they interview them, what is the starting pay? We've already sat down and said that, that these people already know what they gonna be making once they come in, even if they leave. They know what their starting pay is. So, that's something that needs to be informed of when they come in for interviews.
I would say, we make a motion to prove this pending the, uh, starting pay being corrected either as is or to the price of, of what it should be?
That's your motion, you have to, you got a motion to do it now?
Uh, I, I guess I had recommended a while back before. When, when the department is come in and make a request, I'm blindsided, they just come in and make a request. I hadn't had a chance to review their budget or anything. And I know we had spoken there before, for them to come and talk to me, just talk. And then, you know, and I don't know what I, what can be done and what can not be done. But when they just come in and it's like all of a sudden approved, before I'm reviewing the budget to see if they have any money to do these things. It's not just the payroll, not just payroll, you just see everything in general, if they need a person, something or whatever. I can go over their budget, I can look at other line items to determine if they can afford it. And if they can't, I can tell them when they, that we'll decide, gonna decide anyway. But at least it's not a blind side situation, because it's always blindsided. So.
And that's the whole idea of not going on your budget most of the time, is when you're getting with the county administrator to, uh, go through your budget. And see what you have in there and not, then we can do amendments. That's the whole idea, sometimes people go over the budget, we hadn't even amended, amended, but didn't do anything.
We have, we have gone for board the same situation and tried to give raises down the road. And they said, well, if you wanna start that person off where you need, where they need to be, you should've done that up front. And that's what I thought we were doing here.
Some issues, you bring it up to the board, our starting, you know, bring to the attention, our starting salary is two sixty, but this person more experienced, so we'd like three fifty, thirteen fifty or whatever.
I mean, I, I.
That would, that was unvocal with that, and if they wanna amend the budget, they certainly can.
Mr. President, I, I, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this. Uh, that's where you have a, a budget process. And, uh, I would like to see each department, say they gonna hire somebody at twelve hours an hour, after six months, they get this. After a year, they get this. At least the county administrator could put that part in the budget. And if you wanna say, well, you wanna hire somebody with experience, then we all need to have a sheet saying, if they got this amount of experience, it's possible we gonna bring them in at this. Or whatever the pay may be, because if you don't do it like that, and you do it, when you come up here. And we already done adopted a budget at a certain amount, you gonna go over your budget every time. It's a way to do these things, and, and the right way is not to do it like it's being done. That's why we have a budget here, that's why this Phil's came up to him with a sheet saying, after this amount of time, she want her employee to make this, after this she gonna make this. Even though it didn't go through, she had it on paper. Only thing we gotta do is something like that, and we gonna have to be doing it all day.
And I'd like to add, they al- they already have three raises. To get those, uh, three other people who getting an increase, that, in my opinion, that we gonna have to, we, we need to give those raises. Because they already got these positions. So, that's gonna, we gonna have to increase the budget for that, you know.
You talking about that email that we got?
Yeah, that's, that's necessary to me. You know, so we just need to stay straight with everything else, because we gonna have to increase the budget for that.
Oh, yeah, but this has not been approved yet.
Right, it's having been approved, but it's, uh, it need to be approved, because they already been hired for these positions.
Right. It's having been approved, but it's probably need to be approved, because they already been hired for these positions.
I thought they was already there.
Yeah.
They're already there.
They, they used to be there, of course, that already.
No, they didn't.
They had to move to different positions.
They accepted you from there.
And, and, and they had been, it's not, Mr. President, excuse my, I'm trying to talk about really moving on. But, uh, those people had been working, like, uh, in position from what I understand, I know these people have worked for probably six months to a year in a position.
They ain't been that long.
Well, some of them. Something, what, they, they.
Were you presenting those today?
Just that one.
Just that one, so.
No, he don't. No, he don't. Okay, we done.
Alright, so we did have a motion on the floor. Do you want to rescind your motion, or?
Can I say one more? No, I'm gonna amend it. Can I say one? I'm on. Were three people starting to jam, and the ones that left, they were at thirteen point three, so it's not like it's, you know, we've already budgeted for that. But I do want to say this, to make it short and simple. But I say all the time, it need to be a better form of communication. If we can get down to the table and communicate, no matter what's going on, that's from the administrator to the shared department, to D nine one one, to everybody, I'm not saying one department. We need a better line of communication, so when we come forward with board, things are already be worked out and will be understood. I preach that all the time, so if we can communicate better, it'll be better. But, uh, ma, Mr. President, I will amend that motion, uh, approving the raise pending. I mean, uh, uh, the hire. I will amend that motion depending review of the qualifications.
Basically, yes.
Basically, uh.
But the, the original starting salary.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if they can increase it.
What they call county, county administrator?
Yes.
Our motion, I don't know.
It's clear.
He's amending his motion to approve the hire, thirteen twenty-three, based on their experience as they communicate with county administrator.
Yeah.
They're not, they made a motion for that, that's just, okay.
He doesn't know it.
It's a wide, wide motions. Your own motion by supervisor Dan, just can you say? Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
The only other thing I have, um, we bought new tagers and also body cams back in April with the board approval, sent them in, and we need to get that bill paid. The total is, uh, it was twenty-eight thousand, one seventy-three twenty on the body cam, and the tagers were eighteen thousand. And that's been approved through the minutes. We just need to get a check cut to get these big things.
Well, I'm thinking, it's shot here. The problem with, with it is, uh, they involve procedures. There is no PO issue. And maybe three is at the jail, and they didn't use it, so it's not, if PO, uh, Amboss cannot supersede.
Yeah, you don't need to follow.
I'll have to get a court order.
Yeah.
Court order, okay, okay.
Whoever's fault it is, go sign it. But if you get it in, we'll let it, we can have it on the dock.
Okay, okay, thank, thank you.
Mr. Parker. Good morning.
Good.
Good, how are you? Thank you. Uh, the reason I wanted to speak to everybody this morning, uh, right now, I've got about five to eight people that are covered by groups that are alive. One or two that have died from heart attacks, several cancers, and when they find a cancer, it stays four. And a lot of this, and this is not just indicative of this group, it's indicative the entirety of the United States. During COVID, people quit going to get their healthy, their wellness benefits, whether they was with Blue Cross or whoever. And we all thought that the next year, that people would get back on the horse and go see the doctor and make sure they were well, that they were in good shape, but it hasn't happened. Uh, right now, uh, the county and every other group I write, about thirty percent of the covered insured people are going to get their wellness benefits. So what's happened? Uh, I've got a close friend who, uh, his dad fifty, he was fifty-two when COVID hit. They own a dairy farm with six thousand five hundred cattle in the state of Washington, and he's a workaholic. And he was having symptoms, and he just, well, I can't get into the doctor, never mind, I'm not going. They kept going on, kept going on. He's gonna die. By the time he got his wellness benefit, stage four prostate cancer, rounds of chemotherapy, desperation, and the, uh, and everything that goes with it. So, and I've, I've spoken with Angie about what the policy is in terms of county employees going to get their wellness benefit. And, and I've talked to banks, I've talked to many people. Typically, an employee has to take some sick time to go to the doctors to get their wellness benefit. And this morning, I just wanted to plant a seed, maybe, and I'll come up with some ideas, maybe, you know, me getting back into all of the departments, department heads, trying to, uh, impress this upon the employees. And maybe say, look, if you go get your wellness benefit, you're not gonna get drugged for sick time or, you know, just go do it. And I can actually go to the county site that I have access to, click a button, and I can look at every soul that's going to get their wellness benefit. So, and I don't gratuitously, gratuitously look at that type of information in terms of who, don't what, but I can do it.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Let me cut you off. Mr. President, uh, whoever, this is gonna be my suggestion, whatever you suggest to the employees, run it by him first and make sure it's legal.
Yes.
Cause I don't want nobody going out and, and, and leaving work and, and thinking that they not gonna be drugged. And Chad come down here and say, well, y'all got employees that's leaving to go do this on county time and doing whatever, in case maybe, just run it by him and make sure it's legal before you tell it to our employees.
Of, of course, and that's why I'm here today, and to let you know that if an employee comes to Robbie and says, you know, October eighth, I'm going to get my wellness benefit, okay, great. I get an email, Fred, check and see if so-and-so got their wellness benefit. I can check. So that somebody doesn't want to go fishing that morning or hunting, or, or drive a Jackson and, and yell and not go get their wellness benefit. But that's the purpose of me being here this morning. And, uh, I'll come up with some ideas and email Scott, and we'll see if we can get these numbers up, because I promise you, in a group this size, when only thirty percent of the people have gone to get a wellness benefit in two years, just somebody with a bad feeling fixing to come on. But it's better than catch it now and treat it rather than just let it go in the fur. So thank y'all for your time, and Scott, I'll get to that.
Fred, um, you know, he leaves with my employees, I'm like, okay, you gotta go to the doctor, schedule it early in the morning or schedule later in the afternoon. These, this thing of taking the whole day off to do something like that, kind of works on my nerves a little bit, because it gets, for some of my other employees in the bind.
Sure.
But, um, so, uh, yeah, everybody needs to do that. And I know several cases, just like you talked about, people putting it off, not, I'm okay, I'm okay, and the next thing, they're not okay.
They're not okay. Well, okay, I'll, I'll come up with some ideas, run it by Scott, and then we'll go from there.
And there's plenty of stories where people did their wellness, found out their account levels went right, had stage one cancer and got it, you know, was able to attack it immediately and save their life, so.
Modern medicine is the one. Doc can't do so much, you know, we.
Yeah, and, you know, I've had some people say, well, we pay our employees to, you know, you know, this is a free benefit that county pays for, for the employees. You shouldn't have to pay a grown person or give them monetary incentive or anything like that. But, uh, anyway, I know y'all got bigger things on the agenda, so I don't know what's up.
That's a pretty big one, but thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Fred.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Fred. Alright, nobody else? Both comments?
Alright, we'll come to the table, supervisor Greg.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I don't have that much to say. Uh, got a bit of dig on Morgan Town Road, and, uh, I want to thank, uh, Scott for coming out to the neighborhood watch, uh, meeting on Morgan Town Road to explain to the, uh, representatives, give out their exactly, uh, process that, uh, we gonna use to, uh, deal with Morgan Town Road. Scott, uh, and board, I think, uh, we need to go on a schedule, a public hearing for this A R P money, where we can start, uh, doing whatever we gonna do with this money. Get a plan in place, where we can, uh, get some people in this community with this money. Uh, last meeting here, uh, I don't know what happened, but, uh, when, when, when you honest and open and fair, uh, when the devil come in, people gonna call you, and I had so many people stop up by my place business. I didn't know what was going on, but they heard about what had happened, and and I want to just thank them for all the phone calls and stopping by my shop and encouraging me. But at the end of the day, I'm telling them, board this. Anytime somebody in the community will plan for over a month, they come to a board meeting and try to build their character and test somebody else's character down, that person is really sick. And the community gonna find out, there's a whole lot of people involved in that, that she told and, and they telling everybody, so it ain't gonna be no shock. Now, for the Democrat, let me say this. I know I have never been a favorite of a Democrat. And only thing I expect out of the news is this. When we went to Batesville, they have a national Democrat up there. And it's totally different from the national Democrat here. They so positive, everything positive. But here, it seem like we dwell on negative news to sell papers. And it is not working, because we only sell them three days a week. Uh, I, I just suggest this, because Democrats be at pretty much all our meetings. And if they not here, they on Zoom. So when somebody in the public come up here and say something that's not true, and the Democrats sit here, every meeting, they got to know it's not true. Only thing they can do is do some investigating, reporting, it's good to just reporting in and everything somebody say, when you know it's not true. My deal is this. I'm for the community. And I ain't gonna do nothing to harm my community. I ain't gonna do nothing to assassinate nobody, capture, that I work with every day, because there's a lot of people smiling in your face, and at the end of the day, they throwing bricks and backstabbing you. That got to stop. There's too much backstabbing going on, and it need to stop. But, and the only way it's gonna stop, I guess people have to be exposed, and it's gonna happen. So, Mr. President, uh, I'm gonna ask to be excused, and I'm gonna call in on Zoom, cause I got the ten, very good friend of mine, Colonel, for eleven o'clock. And I'm gonna call back on Zoom, and hopefully I'll make it back in time for any other conversation or any executive session. I just need to go show my face and pay my respects. And that concludes my.
Thank you, sir. See if you don't make it back, Mark Paul, he'll be back here fast.
I'll be back for sure.
Supervisor Hutchins.
Okay, what I have is, I want to get a pool for the county employees, uh, today, that they can take flu shots.
Got a motion, is it?
That's a motion.
Is that covered with the insurance or?
Yeah, do, yeah, but it's a membership.
We're selling insurance, we got to pay for them, but it pays for itself.
Yeah, but the, uh, the nurse, our nurse does, uh, and does, so it's no, just this time, uh, we're almost at take over rework, it's no, really no cost.
Yeah, so we did, you had a motion?
Got a motion by supervisor Hutchins, can you say?
Yeah, we all have some.
I was saying, you had to have a motion to approve the flu shot.
What she's talking about is having a, where they offer flu shots, or any employee can come in and take it, you know?
Okay, okay, good. So.
Second by supervisor Dan, is any discussion?
That, uh, I go for it, um, we got.
All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Okay. Also, LeBrange, um, Community Center, we are having the neighborhood watch, uh, this Thursday, September twenty-second, at six o'clock. Anyone else want to attend, would be good. Also, on October the first, we'll be having Oktoberfest, that's at the LeBrange Community Center. We will be giving free food, uh, be fun, music, and we'll also do voter registration. We'll also be giving away masks, sanitizer, um, school supplies, like pack of the school supplies in it, and T-shirts. We'll also have a cook on. And so we asked everybody to bring their grills for a cook on, right, I see you back there. And I went over there and two hundred dollars for the best tasting food. And, um, I think I already talked to, um, IMS about the DFIR information to put in that grant, for the typing on DFIR vote. And this, like, and we also discussed to, that was everything, that's it.
But you're supposed to use a motion? To put Deerfield Road into the grant?
No, I'm not having a motion, I just said I didn't talk to her.
She said motion.
Uh-uh.
Okay, I was, uh, going to pick up one of my grandchildren yesterday to take her to church, and I, I passed an elderly gentleman on the side of the road, and I was curious what he was doing, and I realized that's Ken Beasley. And further up the road was his wife, Sue Beasley, and they're picking up trash on the side of Liberty Road, and they're cutting limbs and stuff. And I'm like, the Beesley, you know, this is Ken Beasley from Cathedral. And, uh, I see them all the time picking up trash on Montebello Road, but they were all the way out off of Liberty Road, past John's Man, and old John's Man, and I, I just wanted to say that, you know, that's really, really neat that, that people like to have to get out there and pick up trash like that, and they, and they do it all the time. I don't know if anybody realizes who it is or what they're doing, but it was, it was pretty nice. But then I, I come back two, three hours later, and a big bag of trash right in the middle of the road. Like if I spring, I straddled all over the place, I'd get mad about that, and go to my shop, get a rake, come back and kick it up, have to rake it up and shovel it up. I, I just don't understand why people throw out so much litter. But I'd like for them to be a little bit more conscious about it, because, you know, it's, it is our city, and that's what makes me mad about it. It's our city and our county, and, and, and I'd like for it to look nice. When people see stuff like that, they, they wonder what kind of people live here. But, uh, that's all I had, thank you. Thank you, Robbie, for taking care of, uh, the trees out there, and everybody's comment on it.
Supervisor Dan. Yeah, well, the only thing I, um, actually have is, you know, what I kind of hit on earlier at the end of the meeting, and I say it all the time, communication is the key. I mean, we, we need to be upfront, we need to communicate upfront, you know, we all wrong folks here. And, you know, sometimes we have to have uncomfortable situations, but I do think that everybody's wrong, and we can have true conversations, nobody had to leave anger, anger. true conversations, nobody had to leave angry or nothing. When it comes to department head, I think if the county administrator and department head should communicate upfront, I think our meetings go smoother. I think everybody would know what's going on on the front end. And I would just ask that, uh, we try to work on a better form of communication and that is not among each other and that, that is not, not given at all.
Ms. Gaines.
I just have one item, um, need to have the August tax redemption settlement.
I heard the question, chamber. Motion supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
It's all right.
I got you.
Did you miss a vote, Ricky? Two things certificates that we need to sign and file with the board. One of them was for the Morgan Town Road, which we got clarified was only seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, it was not a hundred and whatever it was, I combined the two estimates. And then the other's a couple of trucks for Robbie. One of them ended up being more expensive than what we initially thought. Um, it's a couple thousand dollar more, so Robbie went ahead and requested that he bought. Wes approved it, the board needs to approve it as well. Forty-five thousand six hundred eighty-four thousand one and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Uh, you heard the request, county attorney, can you hear a motion? Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Aight.
I said.
All right, just do them together.
Okay.
What's that one you said?
Um, the ILA with the dis mitigation fund, this is a little embarrassing. I forgot to put a term, even though it's really out of terms, we're applying for a grant and doing it. But all, all, uh, the, all ILAs have to have a term on it and so we need to amend our ILA to include term.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
All right. And this, you just got handed to me from a sanctuary clerk, um, every year we have to do our, uh, compliance or continuing disclosure for bonds and they report various things back required under our bond agreements. And we use the same council board to do it. So I need a motion to approve the compliance report.
Your request, board, motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Aight.
And there's a couple items to be determined.
Ms. Gaines.
Yes, I have one, uh, thing, modification from, uh, CCA. And it's, it's in reference to the transgender care service. They did a modification for additional funds to come in the seat.
We have to.
We really enjoy having our largest taxpayer doing business with us, so you should ask for any extra money for doing it.
Your other request, county commissioner, do you have a motion? Motion by supervisor Gaines, can you say?
I missed it.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Aight.
Is that all you have, Ms. Gaines?
There's not one here.
Um, I did have a question, um, before we close out the year end, do we need to have another docket done to clear out anything remaining?
We got a few things, uh, a county's pay force might have to shut down. You know, I know a few things have to be paid, so if anybody need to get whatever out and then go ahead and get in because we got to blow over the new year. And we have to shut down, okay?
We'll work on that. She showed us. We tried to get out of here and she said.
Yeah, we're gonna have to before we clear that stuff out. So what, when do we need to? Do you wanna try to set up a meeting, uh, to do that now?
To do what? For a budget of net?
For a budget, for the, to approve the final documents?
Um, no, because what we're gonna do is just go ahead and cut off the checks, the doctors not on, or they not gonna send anything out in the realm till the next year. So we just can't cut the checks as usual.
Is this a fiscal year like September?
Yes.
We have to go ahead and cut the checks, right? But.
But we'll.
We, it's not, doctors not gonna be approved until.
The next board meeting.
And then this one they gonna be.
Those will come out of this budget.
Right.
So we need to just, we weren't doing much with Jay, like Janae or get with you or whatever. I got a couple on the list straight for next year.
Janae.
About that, I'm gonna be in the shop.
But she, you need to go ahead, she needs to go ahead and, and do this.
Thank you.
We, the other item I had on my list is Robin's Lake Dam. Uh, I marked it off, but I've got a hit on it. Uh, we, we keep talking about this every board meeting and we keep searching for an answer that we can't seem to get. And, uh, at some point, somebody's gonna be held liable, uh, liable, or liable for this and it's not gonna be this board, so. Um, recreation grant, uh, we had done that, or excuse me, bond that we had done. Uh, do we need to start looking at our playground equipment to put that out for bid?
Yeah, so that's why I was.
I felt the board members to start looking at that.
We've, we've, I've really just been looking, cause I, I started asking, you know, when can we get rid of that guy and he said that.
Money's there.
Yeah, so I started asking, well, I hadn't did anything formal. And, uh, good you brought that up. Now, one question I wanted to ask, uh, I know we had a lot of analysis done, a park analysis, uh, and I didn't know what we gonna use, uh, those park analysis that we had and, you know, you have room to add, add some track foam. And I didn't know that, and so that's why I didn't make the motion.
I asked Scott this morning, are we gonna use that guy to do it? Cause we don't know exactly what we need. We know what equipments we want, but for them to go in and put the equipment there and do the sandboxes and all that kind of stuff, round of equipment, we don't have the employees to do that or anything like that. So I asked Scott about, are we gonna use the guy that did the analysis to do those kind of things? And I think it would be good, cause we just don't have any time to do it.
Yeah, so we need, you know, here we are, you know, we, we've been approved and all this, one is here, we, we, we need to get rolling.
Yeah.
So.
We're not supposed to be liberty day and sort of going over things.
Oh. Which Gaines, did you, in yours and your part in your rodeo ring, I know know my grandkid do it a lot. We went out last weekend to practice and this and that. Rodeo ring needs a lot of work. I was gonna bring my equipment out, um, one afternoon, the disc get dragged and do, just because it's so hard and grass and that thing. But I'm gonna do it myself one time.
Yeah.
We do go practice on Wednesdays now. We started last week and I took my shake and then we need to figure out a way to buy some kind of.
I'm so glad that you and your grandchild can see what we did.
I'm gonna do it one time on my own, I'm gonna tell you now, I'm gonna bring my disc and my drag and do it.
And after the sanding, that we need to do all, and when I asked you, you know, I asked you about trying to locate when I want the cooks and stuff like that.
I have one personally, and I mean, I'm gonna, my disc, I'm gonna bring it, but.
And I appreciate it, but we need to start looking and we'll give a shout to you, give it whoever we need to, because the local folks don't have it. But I'm so glad that you brought the grandchild to see, what we've been dealing with for the last, past ten years. We practiced all that too. It is bad to got grass in the pen and, and well, you know, you can see, but we gonna work on that and, uh, so that, that's, that's something else we can move forward, which you can help me, uh, with, but I, I agree with you.
I spoke to Mr. Neely earlier, you know, last meeting that talked about, uh, somebody broke into the, uh, Lake Monferris Voluntary Fire Station. Uh, I was given a name and, uh, he's gonna have somebody call me, but supposedly that individual was in front of the Dollar General selling the batteries the next day. So.
You know, they tried to bring our tractor down there at the same time. They tried the door open, the window on our tractor, he was there at the same time they broke in the.
So, uh, I believe that's all we have, uh, our ally is. Too late. No, I'm just kidding.
It's another high, too, boy, I wanna ask the board to, uh, make a motion that we entered to the emergency management performance grant, uh, with FEMA through my office and that award amount is twenty-eight thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in? All opposed?
One eight, how much? Twenty thousand?
Tw- twenty-eight thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Is that strictly FEMA or is that FEMA funds?
Well, FEMA sub-branded FEMA down to our office. So, yeah, we don't, that, that's normally goes back, you know, for like salaries and stuff like that.
Where's I have a question?
And what is it called in emergency management?
It's the emergency management performance grant.
Can you forward that to Paige?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Scott, at one point, I'm, I'm going back to the Robin's Lake thing. Do we need to file a suit?
We got, already did a resolution authorizing it, but not.
I made this clock ticking.
I understand.
And, and we're not getting any answers. So we need a deadline to say that we're gonna quit. That going.
Talk with Robbie about the drop dead date, you know. You can go ahead and start fixing the thing.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, that's sneaky. The callers need to be ordered, cause you know, there's, you can't do anything until they're, till they're there. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Um, I believe we have to come live this big time. Do you have a motion? Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.